Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public School Board, Board of Education. Today is Monday, November 18th. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Mathias, can we please take the role?
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Flores.
Present.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Reverend Mathias is present. Mr. Ross.
Here.
Ms. Shadke.
Here.
Ms. Williams is excused. Dr. Baker.
Here.
President Grant.
Yes, here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Sign. We will start with celebrations for this evening. Dr. Gorman.
Madam President, members of the Board, I would like to ask Dr. Maida Gunnel to come forward. This evening she will discuss the Native American Heritage Month.
Good evening, Dr. Gorman, President Grant, and distinguished Board members. I would like to ask Miranda Rickelay to please join me here. Miranda is our Native American Program Specialist, and I would like her to join me in celebrating Native American Heritage Month.
Yes, if you can put the mic closer to you, that would be awesome.
Good evening, Dr. Gorman, President Grant, and members of the Board. Thank you, Dr. Gunnel, for that introduction and invitation to present here this evening. Da Minu Endam, Wabumak, Kinewea, Nungam. I'm happy and I'm content to see everyone here today. Before I begin, it's within our manners as an Inshnabe to acknowledge the traditional territory that we stand upon today. Today we acknowledge the Nahtouasepi Huron Band of Potwadami, the Gun Lake Tribe, the Pogagan Band of Potwadami, and the Sagamotna Chippewa Indian Tribe in the North. My name is Miranda Rickelay. I am the Specialist for the Native American Education Program. I come to Grand Rapids from a small unceded reservation on the eastern shore of Manitouland Island, known as Nidhu Menis. I began with the district last February and am very pleased to bring both my cultural and professional experience to the GRPS table. Thank you to the Board members and administration for allowing me the opportunity to speak a little on the Native American Education Program, as well as the significance of November as Native American Heritage Month. To briefly summarize, our program services 192 registered Native American students across the district. We provide outlets for both academic and cultural supports to GRPS students, guardians, and educators. Our program consists of in-school direct support, after-school programming, and many events throughout the year that serve both capacities. I want to take the time to briefly introduce our team. Ms. Loretta Castaneda, Administrative Assistant.
Hello.
Okay. Cheryl Lopez Hernandez, Elementary Student Parent Coordinator. Ms. Amy Westcott, Middle Student Parent Coordinator. And Christine Stanborn, she is not here in attendance, but she is our High School Student Parent Coordinator. To draw attention to some of the program's events and initiatives, we held a school year opening in conjunction with Michigan Indian Day, which was very well received. We just wrapped up a successful tribal engagement meeting that addressed our duty to consult with local tribes. And last Monday, our local organization known as Westside Collaborative came into our program and hosted a Rock Your Mock event. Moving forward, we will be set to hold an Inshnabe gathering onsite that services our middle and high school students, as well as community members. We culminate this school year with our annual Children's Powell, which will be held at Westwood Middle. These are only a few highlights of our school year and how we celebrate throughout the year with our students. As a measure to example NAEP's longevity and the far-reaching benefit of the program, I would like to welcome Ms. Kami Castaneda to speak on her perspective as a GRPS alumni and a past NAEP student.
Ahau buju, Kami Castaneda Indishnikas, Potway Wadami, Odawa, Ojibwe, Mine Miago, Ndau. Wabuzashio, Ndo Dem, Awastutak, Ndo Chpia, Nodwa Zibi, Nde Bndagwas. What I told you is who I am. I am Kami Castaneda. I am a woman of the three fires. I do live in Grand Rapids, and I belong to the Nahtouasepi Huron Band of the Potwadami. I'm here today to represent a past student of GRPS. I started in kindergarten at Straight School in 1990, where the Native American Education Program is housed today. I am a graduate of Ottawa Hills High School as well. The Native American Education Program has taught me the importance of culture and identity. They provide culturally appropriate programs, events, and activities, not only for students, but for family members and community members. The Native American Education Program gives our youth a sense of belonging at the most vital times in their lives by allowing them to meet community members, build friendships, not only with other youth, but with elders as well. It is very important for anybody to learn their place in the world as early as possible, and the Native American Education Program has been providing that place since the 1970s. My culture has brought me in front of you today, has brought me my career as a Grand Rapids professional and a cultural leader in my community. Revitalization has saved me, and I believe it can save our children through the Native American Education Program. And I would like to say ch'imi gwech to GRPS and Native education. Ahau.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to welcome Ms. Ramona Scott Moon to the table. One of our biggest objectives this year is language revitalization. Ramona is going to introduce herself in the language.
Bujuani, Ramona Indishnikas, Grand Rapids, Donjiba, Inshnabe, Ndau.
Ahau. Mi gwech, presence. Okay. So, throughout the November, we know that our GRPS classrooms are filled with crafts activities and grand discussions on subject matter related to the Native American content. So, as we proceed through this month, let us remember the impact that education can have on the empathy and insights that our students develop in these formative years. I want the district to know that you have a friendly resource in-house that you can access throughout the year. Please do not hesitate to reach out for support. So, thank you for your time and attention. Let us continue to acknowledge Native American Heritage Month as a district and continue to celebrate the rich culture of Native Americans across the continent. Nahau mi gwech. Thank you. Thank you very much. We now are going to go to our student representatives for a report. Let's start with City High.
Okay. So, my name is Lauria. I have two celebrations for you guys this week. So, last week, we were able to meet with the student representatives that are on the student district council. We learned a lot about how the district works and what the role of the Board of Education is. And I had a good time, and I'm excited for this year, and I'm excited to be a voice and to help encourage other people in the district. Our second celebration is that on Friday, Ryan Hopper, Principal of City High, Dan Van Tiel, Visual Arts Teacher, and John Helmhold, GRPS Executive Director of Communications and Affairs, went to Washington, DC on Friday to be recognized and honored for the Blue Ribbon Award for City High School.
Thank you, Ms. Val Minshall for Innovation Central.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here to share celebrations that Innovation Central had during this month. First being that we celebrated Veterans Day by having an assembly where one of our teachers, who was a military pilot, came and he shared his experience with us and life after war. Our second celebration was that we hosted a blood drive. This is the second time we do a blood drive, and we do it four times a year. We do it to show the community that we care and that we want to save people's lives, as well as Feeding America. We try to do food trucks once a month to give back to families in need. Our third celebration was that we held our Debate League, and Innovation Central hosted every year where 12 schools around Michigan come together at a GRPS high school and compete for that trophy. So, we're hoping to win, but who knows?
Thank you, ladies. Next, we have items for Board Agenda, public comment for Board Agenda items.
We do not at this time.
Okay. Next, we will move to Secretary's Report.
Wow. Well, we have an Ad Hoc Policy Committee meeting on Wednesday, November 20th, at 5:30 in Room 101 of Grand Rapids Public School Administration Building. We also have a Legislative Committee meeting on Monday, November 25th, at 1:00 PM in Room 101 here in the Grand Rapids Public School Administration Building. And also, a Finance Committee meeting on Monday, the 25th, at 4:30 PM in the Board Chambers Auditorium of the Grand Rapids Public School Administration Building. Just a reminder as well that we have a School Choice Expo and Family Winter Carnival. It will be Tuesday, November 19th, at 4:30 to 6:30 PM at City High and Middle School in the gymnasium located at 1720 Plainfield Avenue Northeast. Dinner will be provided along with giveaways, music, fun winter games, and activities. Please be reminded that the deadline to submit the School Choice application is Friday, November 29th, 2019, by visiting apply.grps.org. And that is it for Secretary's Report.
Thank you. We will move to Dr. Baker for an update from the Academic Achievement Committee.
Okay. We met a couple of weeks ago, and one of the things that we did, which I think is important for all of us to try to do, is we had kind of a mini workshop on using MySchoolData, so MI School Data. So, most data that school districts are held accountable for, test scores, demographics, by school, by district, et cetera, is available on this site. Often ask questions about this or that data point, and this is all on MySchoolData. And I encourage everybody to try to use it more. It is actually a fairly easy-to-use system, as long as you have plenty of time to do it, because it does take a while to find exactly how you want to do the data, but it's very helpful. We spent most of our time talking about college readiness data and what it means. And just real quick, when college readiness data is reported, it's usually only a score on the SAT, and we discussed what that means, where to, what are efforts to improve scores related to that across the district. We also looked at data on college enrollment. And so, anywhere, depending on the year, 50% to 60% of our students immediately after high school graduation end up either at a two-year or four-year school. Over time, that grows. And in terms of district efforts to improve college readiness scores, much of this, since basically the college readiness score is your SAT score on math and reading, those efforts need to happen not just in high school, but especially at the middle school level, which is where some of the disparities begin. And also, the relationship with two colleges through college, which is GRPS is a partner in helping those students achieve once they graduate from high school. We're continuing, again, we will, that was an initial conversation. We will spend considerable time with that, as well as continue our discussions on the academies, third-grade reading, and teacher evaluation. So, the Board is diving deeper in some of those issues, and then we haven't yet to discuss exactly the agenda for December, but there are other topics on the table as well.
Thank you. Next, we will move to Ms. Lewis and Reverend Mathias to give a report out on the MASB Annual Leadership Conference and Delegate Assembly. Reverend Mathias, would you like to begin?
Okay, well, that's no problem. I was a delegate to the Assembly, as was Reverend Mathias, and the evening was spent really discussing resolutions and bylaws. And basically, all the resolutions, for those of you who care about exact wording, all of the resolutions, all of the mention of children or child has been changed now to student or students. There was only one bylaw change, and that was to add three at-large members to the Board, so there will be three more selected by the President. Then we discussed a great deal about traits of effective school boards, and one of the things they emphasized was understanding, embracing, and monitoring data and using it to drive continuous improvement. And this is basically what we have discussed in the Academic Committee. And at that time, Dr. Baker, I think that we made some, we had some discussion of maybe having like an in-service for those of us who need more information on how to use My School Data.
Well, there was, the Board was invited to a workshop, which was probably last week.
I was going to go to it.
Into those. We could consider having Board trainings of MySchoolData. It's just that we can't have more than four Board members at a time doing it. And also, but we could continue doing, and it's not just Board members that would benefit from doing that. So, that would be an opportunity. So, we'd have to create that as an opportunity and have staff assist us with that.
So, we're going to create it so that we could sign up, four of us could come one time, four of us another, whatever.
We can create it. We'd have to ask staff to do it. So, that would...
We can have a larger conversation, but perhaps with already scheduled committee meetings, perhaps that'll be a way, so there's not a quorum there during the training, but we can further discuss that.
I would say anyone who is interested, though, even if we ended up having a workshop, should spend some time with it first, to just figure out what's hard to do. But it's incredibly rich data, and it's all up to date and very accurate. And it also compares, it'll compare districts, it'll compare schools, so we actually can look at our data versus other similar school districts, et cetera.
Well, I think the emphasis of this resolution was that all school board members should be really familiar with that data. And, you know, I have to admit that I'm one of these people who didn't find it as user-friendly as you did, but, you know, I certainly...
Well, it's only user-friendly if you have a lot of time to be a user.
I should have a lot of time, shouldn't I?
You used to be a couple hours...
Another resolution they adopted was very similar to the one that we had adopted in 2016. They added the nondiscrimination of people for sexual identity. They also, under the health curriculum, they added vaping to include tobacco use, vaping, smoking, chewing, and so on. And there were some other discussions that the Policy Committee will be addressing on Wednesday when we meet. And one will concern bullying, and I have to go in a little deeper with Ms. Pitts, our...
Attorney.
Thank you. I was going to say lawyer, but okay. Lawyer, something to do with hiring practices that they suggested about athletic coaches, but I think Ms. Pitts has sort of worked that out for us, because it involves smaller schools rather than a large school like ours. But there was that recommendation.
I want to pause for one moment. I believe that Dr. Flores had a question.
Oh, yeah. Actually, it wasn't a question. I was going to suggest that with MySchoolData, that to promote transparency and certainly user-friendliness of that portal, it might be good to extend that to community and parents. I think that, you know, we live in this particular age, and I've been on that site before and gotten information, and many people have asked me about data. And of course, that's generally where I send them to and explain quite briefly that it is somewhat user-friendly, but to get deep into the detail, it's harder. So, just a suggestion as something that we could do for our community.
Perhaps we make a note of that to have a discussion with Dr. Gorman and his team for parent university, create a resource for that. Okay. I don't think this portion was supposed to be this long. I do have one quick question, Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
I want to clarify one of your points. Did you say that the MASB Board has added three more seats?
Yes.
To the overarching board?
The overarching...
And they're appointed by the President?
And they're appointed by the President. So, these were going to be at-large people. And one other thing I forgot about, too, was, and Mr. Helmhold might be able to tell us more about it, is there's quite a discussion about the fact that the legislature wants all school boards to be certified and take all these classes and be certified. And of course, there was a big discussion about that, because what are they going to do with us if we don't do it? And another part of it was what other elected public officials are required to go through some sort of training before they can, you know, be seated for a position. So, it was a little controversial, but not too bad.
Okay. Reverend Mathias?
Yeah, actually, I think the conference this year was pretty robust. There were over 550 different Board members from all over Michigan that were represented. That's a real unique opportunity for us to talk with each other and to find out what each other is doing. I had the opportunity to go to a couple of the offerings that they had. One was on social-emotional learning and being trauma-informed, and also on, and something that we're talking about here, and that is having a much-focused approach on school discipline and classroom management, quite a bit of things that are going around our state in regards to different, how different districts are doing it. Also, I had an opportunity to actually meet the President of GRCC, who spoke Sunday morning to that crowd of representatives, and he did quite a good job. He did give a shout-out to Grand Rapids Public School, which I was appreciative of. And just the work that GRCC is doing with a lot of the middle school kinds of things that we're doing to get kids ready, a fifth year of college will weld them an associate's degree potentially. So, that's quite innovative, and that's something that our school district is doing and something that he highlighted to over 550 representatives. And had a lot of good conversations around the table, around what districts are doing. One impressive thing was around third-grade reading, and one particular school in the Troy area actually decided that they were going to go for excellence in their education. And with that, their Board decided, "We're going to allow you to do that work, and we're going to back you up with the finances and what you need, but you better make sure that you get it done." And it was quite interesting to see what occurred as a result of that, and hopefully I'll get a chance to share with that in more detail in our Board meeting. But it was a good opportunity to kind of get reinvigorated in terms of the work that we do here as a Board. So, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Madam President, may I address Dr. Baker's concern? This is a piece of legislation, Dr. Baker, that is in the House and in the Senate of Michigan, but the MASB has supported it, had a resolution to support it, but the members were not so sure that we were in favor of supporting it. But we did not come out and say we didn't, but we're going to let it be handled now by lobbyists and so on. And John, Mr. Helmhold's shaking his head, so what does that mean exactly?
He doesn't mind sending us all off to train.
So, did MASB formally support the legislation?
No, not the delegates.
They took no stance?
No.
Right.
Okay. All right. Superintendent's Report.
Madam President, members of the Board, I would like to ask John Helmhold to come forward this evening. He will be discussing our certified fall count numbers, as well as our inclement weather procedures. Mr. Helmhold.
Thank you, Dr. Gorman, President Grant, members of the Board. I come bearing great news. We had the second-best count day in two decades. We are pleased to report the certified count came in at 15,349. That's an increase of 20 students over last fall's count, factoring in for the center-based special ed shift. And that's actually a 214-student increase over what you budgeted. So, if we do the math with our new state funding, which was at a 240-per-pupil increase, puts us at 8,111 per pupil. So, we're looking at about $1.7 million difference as a result of this enrollment increase. So, hats off to everyone out there who was hustling to really help ensure that we filled our seats and continue to promote our great schools, from the neighborhood, the themes, the Centers of Innovation. We saw the increase across the board. Brookside had some of the largest increase in enrollment, so we're seeing pockets of enrollment growth and are going to continue to push on that.
What was that number again, Ms. Helmhold?
The, which number?
Total number.
Total number. Certified count, 15,349. All right. Shifting to the severe weather and school closures, it is the season. We take this very seriously. As you imagine, even just, was it a week and a half ago when we got our first real dusting, people were calling for school closures with barely three inches of snow. And so, we wanted to reiterate what our position and how we approach this. We send crews out in the early evening, and they will drive all the way up till about 10:30 at night to assess the conditions of the road. It's not just the main arteries, it's the secondary, as well as the side streets. Chief Johnson is in contact with the Rapid, the Police Department, Kent County Road Commission, the taxi cab drivers, to kind of find out how they're getting around. And so, our hope and our intent is to make the decision by 11:00 PM the night before if we believe that we have the conditions that would warrant closure. Otherwise, they will wait until the following morning. We make that call by 5:30 AM, so that we can ensure the buses are getting out, the ovens are getting turned on for breakfast, and that we're ready to go for the start of school. We are going to continue to communicate with our parents, so they can learn more. If there are school closure, we communicate it in multiple vehicles, of course, through the media outlets. We post it to Grail and send out a press release. So, the four main television stations are the most common, but several radio stations, as well as MLive, report on it. We have our automated phone call system, text message, email, social media, and then, of course, there's the main line. If you call 819-2000, they can check whether schools are closed on that time.
So, the school board president doesn't make the decision?
I do not direct all messages to John.
One thing we do, if we are closed, we want to reiterate that principals are required to report in the event that families may not have got the word. The students will show up at school, and we want to make sure there's an adult presence there to welcome them, take care of them, until we can reunite them with their parents. We also have a number of our security personnel that are also mandatory to report that day in the event that we need to shuffle them around. Some other kind of words of recommendation for our parents, just keep the sidewalks and driveways clear. Talk to their students about their safety. They need to take a little extra time getting to and from school. They need to be cognizant that it's harder for cars to stop in this type of weather. And make sure they're wearing reflective gear, so that they're a little more visible. If it's blustery and snowing, it's a little harder to see the pedestrians, individuals who may be on their bikes or walking. And just, again, make sure to map out what is the safest way to get to school. In some cases, the main arteries are, they're plowed first, so how to get a child to that main artery to then get to school is the safest way to do it. That's all.
Thank you. We have a few action items. The first one is the Superintendent Search Profile and Flyer. Did you all have a moment to review? This latest version has several updates from the first version. I want to thank John... I want to thank John and his team for stepping in and helping with some redesign of that piece. Is there anyone who has questions or concerns about this piece? We'd like to get it confirmed so that we can get it posted on the time, the advertising timelines.
There's just a little, something going on right here. The public school.
Yeah, the logo. So, we'll make sure that that...
It looks like.
I know. You thought you had it all, John. So, we'll just get the logo straightened out. Anything else? If not, do I have a motion to approve the Superintendent Search Profile with the upgrade of the logo?
Motion for approval.
Do I have support?
Support.
Okay. If you find any last-minute typos, though, please feel free to get that to Mr. Helmuth before we get these sent out to the advertisers. Reverend Matias, can you take the role on that?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schacke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams is excused. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay. Next, we have Parent Advisors for Special Education. We are, we would be taking a vote to approve the district representation for this, for this committee. Do I have a motion to approve? The Parent Advisors for Special Education District Representation?
So moved.
Support. Reverend Matias?
And we have the name of the person?
Amanda Benitez.
Have they present? Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Matias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schacke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams is excused. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Lastly, we have the Richard Lemons Contract for the Leading the GRPS Way in Instructional Rounds. Would anyone have any questions about that piece?
Just a quick explanation of what the position is?
Sure. Yes, Richard Lemons has been working with us for quite a few years. He is connected to the Harvard work, Harvard work that's taking place in the district from a professional learning perspective. Of course, leading the GRPS Way is professional learning for our building-based administrators in our school district. Richard helps facilitate those meetings and also helps prepare for those meetings. He's an expert in the field of school improvement and he is quite a resource for the Grand Rapids Public Schools.
Do I have a motion to approve the Richard Lemons Professional Development Contract?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Matias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schacke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams is excused. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
So, I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Grouping?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Matias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schacke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams is excused. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
We do not have discussion items for this evening. Do we have Public Comment for Non-Agenda Items?
We do not.
Okay. Superintendent's Comments?
No comment.
Dr. Flores?
Well, I'd like to certainly congratulate, congratulate Ms. Ricolette in having the Native American Heritage Month celebrated. You know, history will prove that culture and history itself is, are tied together. And I hope that we expand our focus on, on discovering Indigenous history locally and nationally and that we do that and integrate it through all of our, our books and curriculums and that we're more than just a celebration approach to all of the contributions that ethnic and racial minorities have made to this country, along with the, the vast number of majority ethnicities that contribute to our mosaic. And then, I'd like to use board privilege, if I could, for a moment to reflect on the passing of a Hispanic leader this week. Jorge, Jorge Rivas passed away and he was a 30-year public servant in the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. He led this, this community in a number of celebrations downtown, the Mexican Heritage Committee. And we will, we will really miss Jorge. His daughter was a military servant, having, I guess, come out of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, came back as a teacher and served this district for several years before moving on. But just a note, I think it's a real loss, Jorge Rivas. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Baker?
Yes, I appreciate, again, you recognizing the giants that, that we work with, that we have the privilege of having done. I also appreciate the connections that you made to cultural identity and learning. And I think it's really absolutely important on many levels. And, and great news about the, the growth of, you know, our expected numbers. So, it's, it's pretty remarkable and, and so, anyway, that's all.
Ms. Davis?
I just want to share that I had the honor of attending the Blandford School International Dinner last week. And it was just a wonderful experience. I got to be a guest at a table with two families and spoke with the students about the project that they've been working on. They each picked a country to research. And then, that night, each family made two dishes from the country that they represented and we got to try all different dishes from around the world. And then, as a music teacher, I was really excited to see that they all participated in about seven or eight dances from different cultures around the world. And it was just beautiful to see all of these sixth graders working together, you know, holding hands, learning the moves, persevering, and just being so proud of their accomplishments. So, it was wonderful.
That is wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Ross?
No comment.
Ms. Schacke?
No comment.
Reverend Matias?
Yeah, congratulations to Ms. Benitez to represent our, our students. And it was a little bit emotional to see the young girl speak in her native tongue. That was, that was really amazing. You could see the pride in her. It's like, yes, I did it. And it was, it was quite amazing, again, to see that our schools are not only educating, but incultrating in, in many ways and promoting that and then celebrating that. So, that's a great honor. And again, it was really an honor to be able to represent as a voting member at, at the MSBA meeting last week. And just to, to be able to talk about our district and, and the kinds of things that we're, that we're both struggling with, but also trying to accomplish. So, that was, that was great. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I too would like to echo the comments concerning Native American culture and, and how we are trying to incorporate that into our curriculum. Also, I'd like you to know that I have taken the in-service for those of us who are going to be helping third graders learn how to read. Jamie Mascol of Aberdeen showed me how, she's got three kids that I'm going to work with, showed me how to go through the, the program, which, from what I'm hearing, it imitates the tests that they will eventually take. And so, we have all these trial tests for the kids to take. And so, they will have a tutor, they have other people besides volunteers. They have teacher aides who will be giving it. But I will also be giving that to third graders at Aberdeen.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a nod to Ms. Williams, who was not here with us this evening, but was a part of requesting the presentation on the work that we do with our Native American students. And it was really wonderful for that. So, she wasn't here this evening, but I wanted to make sure to give a nod to her. And meeting is adjourned. Thank you.